Thank you. Start the meeting, we're gonna open with prayer by our own Alderman, Jack Young, and then we'll do the Pledge of Ladies.
Would you pray with me, please? Heavenly Father, we just thank you for this day, the beautiful weather you've given us, Lord, we're grateful for that. God, I pray that you'd grant us wisdom this evening as we do this city's business. Lord, guide and direct each of us to do the things that are in the best interest of the citizens of Bartlett. Thank you for all the blessings that you give us. Lord, I pray that you'd always bless those and protect those who place themselves in harm's way for our benefit, and I pray this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge of Ladies to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And start the new business of the day. We have minutes, have we had a chance to read those and review? So, any changes requested?
How move we approve?
You hear a second?
Second.
Thank you. Call roll.
Greg Easton. John Conroy.
I'm staying.
David Hyatt.
Yes.
Jim Lamb.
Yes.
Kendra Matrillo.
Yes.
Jack Young.
Yes.
James Reed.
Yes.
Don Conway.
Yes.
Paul Kaiser.
Yes. First, we'll have the Union Depot. Actually, just wanted to tell everybody the vehicle repair shop is withdrawing that application, so we'll move on to Union Depot, Plan Development. Kim, if you'll come forward and introduce that.
The developer Keith Grant with Blue Sky Development is here tonight to request a favorable recommendation to the Board of Mayor and Aldermen for a special use permit to allow an additional residential mixed-use development, which will be located across the street from the Union Depot development that is currently under construction. The property is located at the northeast corner of Highway 70 and Highway 64, and it is located within the SC-1 Planned Unit Commercial Zoning District. Back in December of 2021, the Board of Mayor and Aldermen approved a special use permit to allow for the submittal of development plans for the Union Depot residential mixed-use development, which is currently located on 73.9 acres. That was also the former site of the Tennessee Baptist Children's Home. And again, it's located directly across the street from this proposed development. The specific request tonight, again, for the Planning Commission is for a favorable recommendation to send to the Board of Mayor and Aldermen to allow the applicant to move forward with the application process for the Phase Two, or the first addition, as they call it, of the Union Depot residential mixed-use development. According to Article 6, Section 29 of the Bartlett zoning ordinance, a special use permit is required to move forward with the submitting of development plans for a residential mixed-use development. The surrounding districts are SC-1 Planned Commercial Development to the north, Commercial, City of Memphis Commercial to the south, and RS-10 Residential Single Family to the east, and CH Highway Business Commercial, and OR Neighborhood Office with mixed residential use development to the west, which is also under the special use permit. The surrounding uses include residential pest control business, veterinarian clinic, childcare center, restaurants, a multi-tenant retail, bank, gas station, and convenience store. The applicant has provided two conceptual scenarios for this application. The first scenario, Scenario A, includes commercial with a mixed use of lofts, and that will be 225 units, 9.5 acres of commercial, and 275 flats. That's a total of 500, a mixture of 500 flats and mixed-used lofts. It will also provide 7.1 acres of green space. Scenario Two will have a mixture of commercial and lofts, and that will be 225 units, along with 2.1 acres of commercial, and then 385 flats, which will be a total of 610 units, and 8.5 acres of green space. The recommendation tonight is for approval of a favorable recommendation to the Board of Mayor and Aldermen with conditions as listed in this report. I'd like to just say that this, this special use permit is only to allow the applicant to move forward with the filing of additional plans, which would include subdivision plans for the subdivision of the property and/or site plans for this property. It is not the actual approval of the final plan. That comes later on. This commission will have multiple opportunities to look at those plans, as well as the Design Review Commission and any other board that is needed. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Taylor. Does anybody have any questions for Director Taylor? Seen none, thank you. Would the applicant like to speak?
Actually, if we're gonna have a public hearing, I could just do that.
Sure, that's fine, thank you, sir. So, we are gonna go to an open hearing, and what we'll do first is we'll ask for anybody that's for the application to come forward, then after that, we'll have anybody that's against it come forward. So, first, we're just open the open hearing, and anybody that's for the applicant, application, sorry.
Three minutes per person.
Yeah, that's a good question. Sam, just remind me about the rules, so it's gonna be three minutes per person, 20 minutes total per side. So again, that's three minutes total per person, and then 20 minutes total per side.
And we did receive two letters in opposition.
Okay. Would you like to read those now?
Yeah, I can.
Sure, go ahead and read those now.
So, the first one is from Jim and Mindy Sturgill at 3100 Briarly Lane. It says, "Planning Director Kim Taylor, as residents of Bartlett, we urge you and other city officials to cautiously consider the long-term effects and possibly unforeseen consequences of a second Union Depot development across the current one. Building two high-density housing developments literally across the street from each other could have a devastating effect on area traffic and accidents, particularly at the already busy intersections of Stage Highway 64 and Stage Kirby Witten. The coming gridlock will affect the entire city. With this in mind, we have a few questions. Was a traffic study done for the current Union Depot development? How can we access it? Has a new traffic study been done for the proposed development? If not, will it be done before the Board of Mayor and Aldermen vote on granting the permit? We look forward to hearing from you." And the second letter is from Pam Vaughn, who I, I have her address, I looked it up on the register in my notes, but I don't have it right here because it's an email, but I think she lives in the same neighborhood. It says, "I am very angry and disappointed that the Bartlett Planning Commission would even consider giving the developers a permit to build another high-density development when they haven't finished or occupied much of the first development. We don't know what the infrastructure burden is going to be from Union Station One, much less double the effect from another such development. In fact, you don't even know whether the city of Memphis will take the sewage from it. We don't know what effect Bartlett will experience with our roads, schools, traffic, et cetera. In fact, until the developers get more done on the first Union Station, we don't know whether they will do what has been promised to the nearby neighborhoods. The residents of Bartlett, the taxpayers of Bartlett are owed consideration. We are asking that you at least delay approval of another massive development until they can finish the first one and get it occupied. Thanks for your consideration, Pam Vaughn."
Thank you. So, we'll go back to the public hearing. Public hearing, if anybody's for the development, please come forward. Anybody for the development, please come forward. Seen none, anybody against the development, please come forward, one at a time. You have, remember, I'll tell you, three minutes. If you'll state your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, it's Phil Caspier, 3100 Lisa Marie Cove. I've been in Bartlett for 30 years now, and we moved to Bartlett because Bartlett's a quiet, nice, small town, you know, and I'm kinda disappointed not to see the mayor up here tonight, you know, this is his doing, and he doesn't have the courage to be here, which is kinda disappointing. You know, it's, well, you know, you think you'd wanna turn into Germantown, Carrieville, build it better, but yet, we're going towards Cordova. Anytime you build apartments, it ends up like the Hickory Ridge Mall, Raleigh Springs Mall, Mall of Memphis, it's urban blight 12 years from now. Excuse me, I'm sick. You know, 12 years from now, when they make their money, who's gonna maintain them? You know, you're gonna wanna build another one, but what about the homes that got apartments sitting in their backyards? It's not fair to the people, but would any of you want it? You know, right in your backyard? No. So, why would you do that to another neighborhood? You know, it's greed. You know, they haven't filled the first one, don't build a second one. I live down the road, and you know, it's not gonna directly affect me, but I don't wanna see that mess. I wanna be more like Germantown, more like Carrieville, build big homes, get the good tax dollars. You know, that's about all I gotta say, you know, it's just urban blights coming in. You go past the, what's that apartment down there on Stage Road, down there by Kroger and all that, every time I drive past there, there's police cars coming out. You know, you let greed come in, and you know, 15 years, are they gonna maintain the buildings, keep the prices up? You know, what about putting a park in for the people? Y'all went after our park in Bartlett Grove, and you know, we're gonna fight that if it even comes to it. I got enough of time and money, you know? I've done well for myself, and we'll fight that to the end, because if we're not gonna turn our park and satisfy their needs for their, you know, developments, we're a small neighborhood, and we'd like to keep it that way. I'm just asking you to look at it, think about it, before you ruin the neighborhoods. And you got more to think about than just tax dollars. You build multimillion-dollar homes, half-million-dollar homes, you get more tax money instead of giving them tax credits. And that's about all I gotta say. I just hope y'all make the right decision, because, you know, like, again, yeah, I wish the mayor would've been here, at least had the courage to show up. You know, I was here for the last one, he didn't show up. So, that's, that's all I gotta say.
Appreciate your comments, sir.
Thank you.
I do want to remind everybody, everybody on the board is volunteer, except for the Alderman, Jack Young, who's elected official. So, everybody's, everybody that's on the board here is volunteering their time, have for years, to be here. Just wanna make sure everybody understands that.
You're asking, the mayor shouldn't be here. I would love to.
I can't speak for the mayor's office, I don't work for the mayor's office, I don't work for anyone. So, you'll take that up for the mayor. He's, well, he's always very open and willing to talk to anybody, so I suggest if you have questions for him, direct those to him. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Dr. Tara Sample. Want to tell me your name?
I'm Josh.
If you'll state your name and address for the record, please.
We live at 8962 Pembroke Ellis Drive in Bartlett, and Joshua is in the third grade and has been a child at Little Bears since he was two, when we first moved to Bartlett. And one of the reasons that we chose this area to live in is how the tree canopy is and how beautiful the community is. It's safe, and we felt very comfortable with Josh being there. He loves to play outdoors, don't you?
Yeah.
What's your favorite part of Little Bears?
My favorite part is about going to VBS.
Oh, you're going to VBS this week, that's right, with one of the, but what about when you're at Little Bears? What's your favorite part, then?
My favorite part is going to the back, which is super fun, but they're trying to take it away. People are trying to take it away.
What are they trying to do with?
They're trying to turn that into a place where they can just drive cars.
We would like to hear, hear you him a little better. If you'll move the mic down, just pull that down.
Josh, can you tell them a little more about what's so great about Little Bears in the back?
It's so great in the back, because you have like a kickball field, a baseball field, and there's lots of fun toys in the back.
It's pretty fun.
And way more space.
Your little, your big brother went there, and your sister even works there, right?
Yeah.
It's pretty great. But one of the things that we're really concerned about, not in addition, that a playground's not really a great place for a parking lot and large apartments to go over it, is that that area of town, I don't, I'm, I'm not a surveyor, I don't know how it's surveyed, but it's very clearly an overflow area for water. Josh, what happens when it rains at Little Bears? It's so muddy, right?
Yeah, it gets like so much.
Who likes to play in the mud? Maybe you. But, you know, when it's really muddy like that, we think about putting a parking lot, we're gonna have drainage that will go right on top of that playground and where the school children go after school and where preschoolers are. So, I think there's lots of ways to have urban development. We should make affordable living. We don't have to have just millionaires living in Bartlett. I'm certainly not a millionaire, but I think that we can build wisely. We can keep our tree canopy, we can keep our beautiful areas that little children to play for fun, and we can also build, these things don't have to be against one another. I can tell you, my husband and I, we moved here from Atlanta. Atlanta has been developing poorly for decades. They have serious problems with water drainage, difficulty with sewer systems, and urban blight. And one of the things that I love about Memphis is that we haven't replicated that model so far, and I would hope that we can think about expansion in our community without ruining the things that made people want to move here in the first place. Josh, did you wanna add anything?
Nope.
Just, you wanna save your playground, right?
Yeah. That's the one reason why we're here, to save the playground.
Thank you.
I think we should all agree on that.
What's up, gents? My name is John Madgepen, I live at 7431 Olivia Hill Drive, retired United States Marine. Here's what you guys done for a year. You gave away the Bartlett Rec Center to the YMCA. What did the YMCA do? Raised the rates $11. Good move. Why couldn't you all do that? 15 years ago, you could've built a pool back there for a couple million dollars, you'd had a ton of residents staying there and going to the rec, to the pool. Now you don't. You know, this money is being built on, this is TFI, am I correct? Is that not right?
I will say, you know, this is a planning commission, we don't raise rates or anything like that.
So, I'm looking at it, the TFI stands for Tax Increment Finances. So, my taxes are gonna be used to build these apartments? I mean, that's, you know, before you guys make a big decision on everything, you know, I moved here 32 years ago, retired, small town, small community, I loved it. Great place, I coached SWS football for years out here. What have y'all done? Nothing. I mean, before you guys decide to do this, save Phase Two, what are y'all gonna do with Quail Ridge? What's gonna happen to that place? Hopefully, Bartlett's not gonna take it over and make it into a golf course, and you can't manage the Rec Center, what makes you think you're gonna manage a damn golf course? I mean, it's just simple things, man. I don't own a business like some of you guys. I'm just a retired United States Marine, trying to live a nice, quiet, peaceful life in my town. Wanna pass a law? Pass a law saying no renters allowed? That'd be a good idea. I live in a subdivision, 100 people. 30% of those houses are renters. Go buy, bet you five bucks you could point everyone out. Look at the lawn, looks like shit, crap all over the place.
Sir, this is a family, this is a family.
If you can't watch your language, sir, we're gonna ask you to leave.
Garbage filled all over the place, but people, y'all don't care. Rent it out, eh, who cares? Like I said, I don't own a business like some of you guys do, building business, and the mayor not here? That's unsatisfactory, totally unsatisfactory. That's all I wanna say. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Can I make one comment?
Sure.
The mayor does not attend the Planning Commission meetings. I'm the vice mayor, and I certainly listen to everything you're saying, but the mayor's job is not to be at the Planning Commission. However this ends up tonight, it will probably go to the Board of Mayor and Aldermen, and the mayor will be there. Yeah, okay, well.
Yes, sir, if you'll just state your name and address for the record, thank you.
My name is Don Ross, I live at 7820 Charbonne Cove. I'm actually prior military myself. I got out in 2012, moved here with my wife, who is active duty as well. We've been taking our kids to Miss Cindy's Little Bears for, since my oldest is one, so the last eight, nine years. Everybody here that you've heard so far has all had one thing in common to say. They came to Bartlett because it's a family-oriented place. I know none of you were at the meeting at Bank of Bartlett, but I can tell you, Keith Grant is not a family person. He does not care.
Sir, we're not gonna insult anybody here.
That's not insulting at all. That's.
Yeah, I think it is, sir, so.
So, moving on, again, he is not a family-oriented person.
So, that's enough.
Which is why we are.
That's enough, no more. Your time's expired.
My name's Helena Ross, my address is 7820 Charbonne Cove, and I'll come to say the things that my husband was up here to say. I've been active-duty military for 17 years, three years until I retire. I've intentionally chose to be stationed here on multiple occasions because of the community. We, like you said, we've sent our boys to Miss Cindy since they could walk. I had an incident with a daycare before, where the owners and the daycare ladies had let my child eat poisonous berries and tried to cover it up. Miss Cindy was full, she said, you know what, I'm gonna make room. She didn't have to do that for us. Anytime my kids aren't on the bus, or I forget to say, hey, Miss Cindy, we're picking David up from school, she's calling me, hey, are the boys okay? Is everybody good? Do you need anything? I've had multiple surgeries, Miss Cindy has called, do you need me to come get the boys? Do the boys need a ride home? That daycare is a diamond. It is a unicorn. The women and men that work there and own it are phenomenal people. There are not many Christian daycares anymore, especially not in today's world, I think we all know that and could agree on that. One thing I love is that they are not a device place, you know, you don't see the kids playing on their phones, you don't see them on tablets, they're outside, they're learning gardening tools, they are going outside and playing kickball and softball, they're going on all these field trips to keep them engaged and healthy and playing like kids should be. For development to wanna come and build 10-year, 10 feet off of that daycare line, these stories of apartments, to me, is unacceptable. One, they shouldn't be having access to look over their balconies. If they wanted to do some single-family homes right there, that'd be wonderful. I'm sure plenty of Bartlett residents would much prefer single-story homes and the way they look and the hominess of them over these ridiculous apartments that aren't even filled across the street yet. So, I'm asking you to not just consider all the adults' feelings here, but consider what it's gonna do to our kids. I don't know if you have grandkids or kids, whatever, but my boys and my husband outside of my military career, that's all I have. And I would just like you to please consider David and Lucas, and was it Joshua? Joshua are my boy's friends with him. All of those kids at Little Bears that depend on that and that safe place and that happy place and the freedom that Miss Cindy gives them, just please consider that over lining pockets. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. Whitney Jensen, 7430 Shadow Run Drive. I have been in Bartlett my entire life. Graduated Bartlett High School, not to give my age, but one of her first students, myself. Little Bears, born and raised through and through, just got done doing an Easter egg hunt on the back lot that we are discussing building next to, ran the entire field before the leg with both of my little girls, and I know that playground. I can run that playground in my sleep, because I did at naptime for, I don't even wanna tell you how many years. I lived in Midtown, I lived in Downtown. My husband and I chose Bartlett for very specific reasons. Small-town feel, greenery. I lived in a high-rise downtown, and I missed the trees. I miss the nature. We have deer that come across our front yard. My kids look out the back window and see horses. These are the things that brought us back, the school system, the community, the willingness to listen to what we have to say. It's not just about development, it's about keeping Bartlett what brings Bartletonians back. Memphis-born and raised, and I tried it all. I went Downtown, I went Midtown, I went Cordova, and when it came time for a family, we chose Bartlett. And we don't wanna have to remake a decision that we've already made. My kids go to Little Bears now, but they'll outgrow it eventually. They'll be teenagers that ride their bikes in the neighborhood, that play in the front yard, because so many of my friends, their kids can't play in the front yard. They're stuck behind fences, they're stuck in East Memphis, and they're stuck in Chickasaw Gardens and these beautiful houses, but they can't go out front. My kids go out front, they have neighborhood friends that they know their names, and we want to keep that. We want to keep Bartlett Bartlett, not to mention the history. Bartlett is old. Can we not invest in some of the things that have been here for hundreds of years and bring some of that back to life so that we can teach our kids about what's been here for so long? Me being one of them, like Little Bears, being a first-generational Little Bear, like, that's so special. How many people can say, my kids go to the same school that I went to because I chose to come back to home? Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, and thank y'all for being here tonight. I appreciate this opportunity. My name is Greg Williams, I live at 7223 Santa Cruz Drive, Bartlett. I spoke with the developer our last meeting, and he said Little Bears, well, the apartments could be as close as 10 feet to the property line. In my private practice, I come across pedophiles, and if I were to tell a pedophile that his balcony could look over into a playground where little children are playing 10 feet away, I would see his eyes light up. And I'm concerned about that. My daughter went to Little Bears, my grandson is going to Little Bears. I've been in Bartlett since 1992. We've been very pleased with the services we get at Bartlett, from the police to the fire department to you guys, and I really thank you for that. But I think maybe there's something else we can do with that property and the property line being so close, 10 feet, and the developer told me, yes, and there will be balconies overlooking that property. So, I'm just asking you guys to please take a second look, because I'm telling you, this is a pedophile's dream, and I wouldn't say that casually, but I'm in the profession where unfortunately I have to deal with pedophiles from time to time, and I just wanted to pass that on to you guys, and thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Wanda Walls, 3035 Ruskin Road, Bartlett. I have lived in Bartlett 48 years in the same house. My children and my grandchildren all attended Bartlett schools, and I'm here because of the part about the daycare. My daughter used to work at daycare there when she was in college, and I, I just don't see how it could be profitable to anybody to put these children in jeopardy from building something that close. And I feel like that if there is anything that needs to be done, whatever's gonna be built, it needs to be on the builder to protect those children. You've heard about the law enforcement for banks, they said we need better law enforcement for our children because they are more valuable. I've known Miss Cindy forever and have never heard anybody speak ill against her. I know children that are going there now, and somebody needs to think about this before they put children in jeopardy. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I hope I can get this out. I'm looking at each one of your faces.
Ma'am, I'm sorry, you'll need to state your name and address for the record.
Lisa Williams, 7223 Santa Cruz Drive.
Thank you.
I'm looking at all of your faces, and I know that I can, I can almost bet 100% you all have children and you all have grandchildren. The safety and the security of our children had better come first, because we're all gonna answer to God. you all have children and you all have grandchildren. The safety and the security of our children had better come first because we're all gonna answer to God for it if it doesn't. That's all I have to say.
We have time for one more, I believe?
Yeah, I guess I better do that.
Okay. Just state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Cindy Cromwell. I live at 8601 Highway 70. I have been, I will say I've been an Allendale resident first because Bartlett took us in. Nobody wanted the River Rats, but here we are. Everybody wants to live in Allendale now. I've lived here almost seventy years. My family lived here. My ancestors lived here. I'm probably eight generations deep living here. I own Little Bears Preschool. I've had Little Bears for thirty-eight years. Before that, I owned several other businesses in Bartlett. My main concern, and I have a petition here that actually one of my former Little Bears, who's an attorney, wrote for us. And I bought a copy for everybody here, and these are the people that signed it, and there's some more signatures coming in. We understand there has to be progress. When I was in high school, I watched Stage Road go from two lanes to what it is now. I've watched Germantown Road go from two lanes to what it is now. Any of y'all that have been in Bartlett a long time, as long as me, if you remember where Whiskey Bend was, well, guess what? That's where the Walmart store is, back there, the neighborhood Walmart, because you couldn't make it around that bend, okay? So I'm born and raised here. Like I say, Little Bears has been there thirty-eight years. I cannot tell you how many children I have diapered over those years. Many of the Bartlett police officers, many of the Bartlett firefighters I diapered, most of the school system, everybody knows who I am because I also work with the school system. I sit on the board for the preschool at the school system. My main concern is I don't want to see a five-story apartment building going up right next to our playground. I know there has to be progress. I know there has to be tax dollars coming in. But I feel like whether it be apartments, or if you want to call it flats, or whatever you want to call it, I don't think it needs to be there for the safety of the children. I feel like either townhomes would be a better alternative, or even if they have to build flats, or if y'all approve that, which personally, in being a resident and owning two houses in Bartlett, I feel like we already have enough apartments. But that's my personal belief. As far as the daycare, I would like to see them, if they have to build it, to move it in a different location, away from my property line. I'd also like to see, whatever they build there, some kind of boundary for the safety of the children. You know, I feel like the developer needs to put up fencing, maybe, you know, trees there, something that people just can't wander over into our playground. Like I say, I've been there thirty-eight years paying my taxes, doing what I'm supposed to do, raising children. And I noticed at the first of the meeting, we said a prayer, we said the Pledge Allegiance. That's why we don't take federal money at Little Bears. Because if you take federal money in your preschool, you're not supposed to say the Pledge Allegiance, you're not supposed to say prayers. And in thirty-eight years, I have never taken any federal money for that particular reason. I appreciate all y'all being here. I hope y'all take this really serious because there are children involved.
We appreciate your comments.
Thank you.
Thank you. Director Taylor, before I call the applicant, is there anything you'd like to say? Thank you. Would the applicant come forward, please? This is your time, you can speak whatever you'd like to. Thank you.
Keith Grant, 177 Crescent Drive in Cuyahoga, Tennessee. Just a quick story before we get started. It's, it's been evident today, I, when Belly Acres came to, as many people here know Belly Acres is coming out here now. And the gentleman, when I first sat at the table with the owner of it, he said to me, he said, he said, why would I go to Bartlett? And he had an agent representing him, he said, what's, I don't know much about Bartlett, what can you tell me about it? And I said, you know, I said, people in Bartlett love their community. They, it's a family-oriented community. I said, it's just a great, we've been involved in the Bartlett community for over forty years, and through our family building homes. It's just a good place to raise your kids. Good schools, good police department. It's a good area. You got, you can hear tonight, childcare with Little Bears that everybody loves. So Bartlett is a, is a good place to live, and y'all know that. Sorry about that. And y'all know that better than anybody, or you wouldn't be doing this. And, and that's why we continue to reinvest in Bartlett, even when others have not. We've come back and continue to build in Bartlett. And so I've heard the comments that have been mentioned today. I don't, I don't like hearing comments against our development company like that as much as anybody else would. But I also care a lot about, about Bartlett and, and know that we have to consider some things as we develop within the community and consider some of the input. It's, I can't just make changes right here on the fly tonight. But I do want to go through the project as presented to you, and just kind of talk through that. And if y'all, obviously, I think you'll have some questions for me tonight, I'd be happy to answer those. What we're trying to do is get through the planning, I mean, this is special use permit, as, as your planning department had explained to you. And, and the site plan comes at a later time. This is a conceptual plan at this point. And, and so, but we're asked to submit conceptual plans when we ask for the permit to move forward. I would like to just give a Union Depot update, just so that you, y'all have an idea of what is going on out there. Some of you came to the grand opening a few weeks ago. But we currently have, of the, of the units that have been delivered, eighty percent of them are already leased. Rents are typically seventeen hundred to twenty-seven hundred dollars a unit. And then also, we do have, as I mentioned earlier, Belly Acres coming there. And part of the reason that they're coming and others are interested, it's because of the, the walkable community. It's a lot of people that live close to each other, it's densely populated, but they know that's built-in customers for them. Actually, even when we go into Union Depot First Edition, one of the larger commercial tenants that we're talking about over there has specifically said to me, we look and target mixed-use developments like this all over the country. And that's why we're looking at this particular one at this time. So, but we could, I'd like to go ahead and start with the presentation that we have.
If I could ask you one more question before we move on to that?
Yes.
So you have read the current conditions and you're acceptable to those?
Yes, I am.
Thank you, sir. So if you'll, we can proceed.
Okay. So, go to the next slide. Okay, so this, this just shows the relation to Union Depot. We had some images up earlier on the screen when Kim had presented that. And this just gives the overall development of what's been approved across the street and the relationship to Union Depot, or Depot First Edition. And Union Depot First Edition is about half the size of the original Union Depot. Going to the next slide. This is, is what's under construction right now. We have the grand opening of the Westerly. Station lofts will be started by the end of this year. We've already gone through the planning commission, that's where Belly Acres is going at the bottom of it. And then we'll have some lofts up above that also at that time. Moving on to the next one. So the latest zoning map, this is what's currently zoned for. All of this is zoned to allow for up to five-story buildings, and I'll just stop right there. I don't have intention of putting five-story apartments in here. There never was an intention of that, of having any flats or lofts that are five stories. So our intention is predominantly three, and if we did go to four, it would be out towards the major highways. We would not push those anywhere towards the back. So, but currently under this zoning, it's up to five stories. And then retail, currently retail stores, so offices could be five stories in this area, allows for restaurants, gas stations, big box retailers, and seasonal shipping containers. So you could actually sit shipping containers out on the property under the current zoning that's there without any permits. And then all of these buildings could be located five feet off of the property line, under the current zoning. So moving to the next, next slide. So here we've got examples of, of uses within the first district, and this would be the residential lofts and complimentary amenities spaces. So the ground floor would have commercial on, on some of the buildings, and you'd have things such as offices, medical clinics, groceries, or food markets, pharmacies, drugstores, restaurants, retail stores, bakeries, and hopefully some restaurants. That's what, I know Bartlett needs some of that, and would like to bring some of that into that area. Moving on to the next section. So this is District Two, and over here, it adds the use of flats over their buildings, and also very, a lot of the same similar options from across the, from over in District One. Also with the addition of townhomes within this area, it allows for townhouses within here. As we move on to the next slide that we have, okay, these are the scenario A and scenario B. This is a scenario A where we have some commercial with a larger retail space in the back with two commercial spaces up front also. But this has the, has the lofts west of, and I call it the, the stream that runs through there, but right on Highway 70, you have the mixed use with lofts, and, and then the flats back behind there, which also adjoins where Little Bears is to the north. We also have, while I got that up, there is detention that we're putting at the, the north side of that to help separate that. And that's, we feel confident we're gonna be putting in that area. It'll probably take a different shape whenever we do this, just because of, when we get into the engineering design, a lot of this will change in some regards as we figure out more about the ground and exactly how it all lays out. As we move on to the next, next presentation here, this is, and this is not labeled correctly, but you would have, where it says lofts up near the front, east of the circle there, most likely that would become, if we don't have a commercial retailer, there would be townhomes over in that area, was our concept of it. So that's just a kind of thinking through the process and how that would actually be whenever we do bring a final plan in. Moving on to the next one on the eastern boundary, for people who do live adjacent to this, there's a requirement within the ordinance that requires setbacks that are, whenever you're off a residential like that, where you have to have a thirty-foot proposed buffer. Twenty feet of it is a city standard, and then, and then also the buildings actually have to be a hundred feet away from that. If it's a commercial building, a fifty feet if it's a townhome. So that's just a requirement. And this is the buffer that we, we're showing along that boundary, which has the large cedar trees along with a fence screen along that boundary. We are proposing, I don't believe it's in my presentation, but just to be clear, we are proposing a fence along the northern boundary between where Little Bears is. So I'll just mention that since it has been brought up. But part of the, of our PD that was, our special use permit request that we submitted has that barrier in there also. Moving over to the, the next slide, just a reminder, final site and landscape plans for each phase will be reviewed by the city to ensure that all proposed improvements will adhere to the, to the plan and city ordinances as required. And then attention to green spaces, we have made sure that we have at least twenty percent, we're actually, I think twenty-five percent on the east side of green space, but twenty percent is what the special use permit requires, and so we've done that. And then common open spaces may have amenities such as hardscape, plazas, pool areas, shaded structures, walking trails, open lawn areas, shade trees, and seating areas also. So continuing on to the next, next clip, this is just some images of some of the product that may be offered in here, which is very similar to what we're offering across the street in Union Depot. There's the commercial buildings and what we would expect architecturally from that, and if we have townhomes, just some examples of that from what's across the street. The next slide that we have in here, I just wanted to kind of point out what, where we are, since there has been several issues raised tonight about Little Bears. This, this is, again, it's a, it's a schematic plan, it's conceptual plan, it's not the final site plan, but as drawn, the building, the closest building is thirty feet off of the property line. The largest building is actually ninety feet away from it. I know where, I mean, we are from where the building is, two hundred and seventy-five feet, but also recognize, not only from what I've heard here today, but I've, I've been over at Little Bears, I've seen the back, I know that the kids do more than just what's in the building. So I do know they go back into the property some, back there. But I did want you all to have a perspective of, of how all this lays out with the property in doing so. I would, just a few other things that I have outside of this, and you can actually flip back to the site plan if you want at this point. Let's see. So I, I've mentioned already, one of the things that we are hearing from people, or from retailers and people interested, they do like the density, that's part of the, what entices people to go into mixed-use developments. You'll find even commercial developments around the country now being redeveloped in this way to help bring in a client base that actually helps sustain those, those community, the, the retail within those areas. It's also, it's, it's a less burden on public infrastructure. A lot of it, and ours is private. What is public, though, you have a lot of people within one condensed area, so there's not near as much stuff on the public infrastructure when it comes to drainage, sewage, water, all of that is a lot easier to maintain and less expensive in a mixed-use development with density. There have been some things expressed about, some concerns about safety and traffic, and we're required to do a traffic study whenever we come back with our site plan. So that's already in place. We do plan to put another arm on the light that we installed at, on Highway 70. We also plan to install a light over on Highway 64 where you come out, where there's currently not a light now. And, and so that will help alleviate some of what could be dangerous situations and that. And they evaluate everything from lanes, I mean, having the proper, if you've got the proper street cross-sections for each of the adjacent roads, being Highway 64 and Highway 70, they look, I think our study goes out like a mile in each direction or something. It's pretty, pretty in-depth on what all it does go into. Also, just as a, a point of reference, we, for all of our communities, we have, we have been in the multifamily world for quite a while, and our family around the city, we run background checks on anyone who comes through those. It's just part of our practice that we do that. And, and we also install cameras throughout our site. So safety is for the concern not only of our residents, but the community, and, and so we take that in consideration when we develop communities like this. And, and then the current, just some brief comments on multifamily within Bartlett. Of the communities that you have, ninety-five percent of all those, of, all, all three of them are an average of ninety-five percent occupied right now, which is a normal range for something like that. You don't typically see them being up at a hundred because there's always some turnover in them. Rents average today in the apartment communities in Bartlett, eleven fifty to sixteen hundred. And that's because, I believe, because you're in Bartlett. You have thirty-year-old communities in here that have rents that have withstood the test of time. Several of these developments have even been renovated over the years. And if you look at other communities within, and let's just compare to like Germantown and Cuyahoga that have had older communities like this, they've been remodeled, they're maintaining their integrity. I've lived in this, in this, in the MSA and Shelby County my whole life, and, and I've seen the same things people referenced off of Winchester that have occurred. It is different within the, within the municipalities, where, where we have people like yourselves leading and controlling things throughout the county. But it's also the, the leadership from the mayor's office all the way down through the staff and the, the great police force and fire department, stuff like that, that y'all have, that makes people want to bring, be here, and also can drive up the premiums, and that's why the rents have maintained this well. Ours are, just out at Union Depot, seventeen hundred to twenty-seven hundred dollars. Some other statistics on this that, I knew it was low, but I didn't realize it was this low. So Bartlett, four percent of the housing inventory in Bartlett is multifamily, compared to Cuyahoga, I mean, to Germantown, which is eight, and Cuyahoga, which is thirteen. One interesting statistics I found out, there are twenty-three hundred rental homes in Bartlett. And I heard a gentleman earlier speak to that effect about how he has several on his street. Twenty-three hundred in Bartlett compared to eleven hundred in Germantown and thirteen hundred in Cuyahoga, which combined, those two communities, Bartlett has about the same number of rental homes. Personally, I think that some of that has to do with the fact there's not enough of the multifamily being offered within the Bartlett area. And so what happens is, is trying to regulate renters and homes is far more difficult than, than someone in a single development. So I just wanted to share that with you today. Again, I mentioned that I know there's been talk about five stories and five feet. We have no intentions of being five feet off the property line. We put within our thing ten feet. I don't see us being ten feet. I sure don't see us having five stories right there. But at this time, I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Yeah, well, any questions to the commission, to the applicant? Any questions from the commission?
Yeah.
John?
What, what is the proposed height of those column of purple buildings?
Okay, so the purple ones are three stories right now.
Any other questions?
Did you say on the current Union Depot that it was eight percent pre-sale now, or eighty?
No, what we have of the units that we've turned over from construction to, to lease up, it's eighty, about eighty percent of them are currently leased.
Eighty?
Eighty percent, eighty percent of them. So we've turned over approximately seventy to eighty units right now. We have sixty percent, sixty of those leased.
Any other questions for the applicant? Any questions?
Have you thought about waiting a period of time to make sure that the, the Union Depot in fact does what you have claimed over these years?
Actually, I'm not really concerned about it because of what I see occurring already. We're leasing at about twenty a month, which is pretty normal for these communities that we've seen. And so it's pretty much on track. We're seeing the rents that we were expecting to get. And that's, that's why we've been... were expecting to get, uh, and that's, that's why we've been, and I, I, let me talk about timing for a minute too. We're not gonna jump in and start this tomorrow, okay, because we have, what happens is the way that we, we get the entitlements done, the planning process, if you all remember, for Union Depot was about 18 to 24 months. Um, our plan is, I mentioned station lofts earlier, our whole plan is to have, uh, Westerly completely leased up, station lofts on the way to being leased up before we start this, uh, because it's just too much to bring online at one time. This allows us to control it as we bring it through by owning the property across the street. So you're talking about probably, I mean, the first one, which would be the, the lofts out here that would come in, um, that would not, I can't see us bringing that online for another three years.
Any other questions from the commission? Seeing none, thank you. Any discussion from the commission? Any? Any questions for the applicant or Director Taylor at this point? Seeing none? We have a motion? Or discussion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, you have a first, any seconds? We have first, any second?
Second.
We have a first and a second? Call a roll, please.
John Conroy?
No.
David Hunt?
No.
Jim Lamb?
Yes.
Ken Demetrio?
No.
Jack Young?
No.
James Reed?
Yes.
Don Conway?
I'll need to recuse my vote.
Okay. Paul Kaiser?
No. Motion fails?
Yes, yes.
Thank you. Just, just so everybody will know, the, the applicant still can go for the Mayor, Board, and Alderman, this was only a recommendation for the applicant going to the Mayor, Board, and Alderman, so that still may go forward, and applicant starting within his rights to do that.
They're still going.
Thank you.
Chairman, can I make a comment please before we go away?
Sure.
We all love our police department, they do a great job, fire department does a great job, we put something on the street, public works, make sure it goes away. Now then, to keep it that way, these folks, uh, honestly want more money, which is okay, and to maintain that, the city has to increase their revenue somehow. Now, there's, I think, three basic ways, money we get from the state, from our sales tax, our part of the sales tax, revenue from developments, from, uh, restaurants, whatever, revenue that comes from those tax dollars. And the third way is to raise our property taxes. That raises, all that bunch sitting back there, the Board of Mayor and Alderman, they abhor, which is hate, raising, uh, property taxes, it's not pleasant, but we gotta do that, we've gotta have the money to run this city. I've been here since 76, I was here when our fire department was a volunteer fire department, telling them that you had to be careful when you heard the siren, and not, make sure your kids weren't anywhere close to the street, because all them volunteers were gonna come around, they couldn't stand it, they had to go 90 miles an hour trying to get to the station. So, we are not, unfortunately, we are not a small 2,600 people town anymore, we are at 60,000 plus, we are either the 10th or 11th largest city, we're not a town, we're a city, in the state of Tennessee. So, if we want to continue to be that way, desirable city, then we've got to find a way to increase the revenue to keep it going like it is. Thank you.
Thank you. We're gonna give just a moment, for everybody that wants to leave, go ahead and leave, you're welcome to do that, and we'll continue in a moment.
You got that right.
Will please have a seat. Thank you very much. Moving on to the site plan, I'm sorry, the final plan for EGY subdivision, Kim, if you'll introduce that for us, we appreciate it.
Christine Donhardt with the Reeves Firm, on behalf of the applicant, is requesting planning commission approval of a final plan for the EGY subdivision. The property is located at 7642 Highway 70, and it has split zoning with the northern half being RS12 residential single-family, and the southern half having CH highway business zoning. In March of 2023, the planning commission approved a master plan and construction plan for the EGY subdivision. Tonight, the applicant is requesting to subdivide the existing 2.69 acre property into two lots, with Lot 1 being 1.226 acres in size, and Lot 2 being 1.043 acres in size. Once lots 1 and 2 are subdivided and recorded, the plat will be recorded, and the applicant will re-record the plat to combine the two lots to create one lot for the development, and this is the way that we created legal lot of record that is eligible for a building permit. Access to the subdivision will be from an existing curb cut on Highway 70. With that being said, we may recommend approval with the conditions as listed in the staff report, thank you.
Thank you, Director Taylor. Any questions for Director Taylor? If you'll please come forward. And want to ask you if you read the, the conditions of staff?
We have.
And do you agree with those?
We are.
Thank you, sir, and would you name your state, your name and address for the record, please?
I'm Mike Davis with Reeves Firm, 6800 Pop Avenue.
Thank you, and anything else you'd like to discuss?
Just, uh, this is a procedural matter that you've been through several times.
All right, thank you. Sure, any questions for the applicant? Seeing none, do I hear, do I hear a motion? All right, we have a second?
Second.
I've got a first and a second?
John Conroy?
Yes.
David Hunt?
Yes.
Jim Lamb?
Yes.
Ken Demetrio?
Yes.
Jack Young?
Yes.
James Reed?
Yes.
Don Conway?
I'll need to recuse from this one.
Okay. Paul Kaiser?
Yes. Passes, thank you, sir. Okay, moving on to the site plan, Kim, if you'll introduce that. Shine and Roll Car Wash?
This is a conjunctive request for site plan approval on the EGY subdivision. Again, Ms. Christine Donhardt with the Free, with the Reeves Firm is requesting planning commission approval of a site plan on behalf of the developer for the Shine and Roll Car Wash. The property is located at 7642 Highway 70, and it has split zoning with the northern half having RS12 residential single-family zoning, and the southern half being CH highway business zoning. The applicant is requesting for approval of a site plan to construct a 3,973 square foot automatic vehicle car wash. The car wash site will have 14 self-service automobile vacuum cleaners on the east side of the building. Access to the site will be from an existing driveway off of Highway 70. The specifics of the proposed site plan are listed in your site data table. Staff has reviewed this application, and again, we recommend approval with the conditions that are listed in your staff report, thank you.
Thank you, Director Taylor. And is the applicant present?
Mike Davis, uh, the Reeves Firm, 6800 Pop Avenue.
Thank you, you agree with the conditions of staff?
Uh, we're in agreement.
Thank you, sir. Any questions from the commission?
Yeah, um, what are the hours of operation?
Eight, nine, ten, to seven.
Thank you.
What, what is the setback from the residential area?
Well, the, the residential is to the right of the site plan, and we're a long way away. The, the, the back half of this site will remain, uh, in a vegetated, treeed manner, so we're a long way away from residences.
Can you give me a rough idea what a long way away is?
Probably 250 feet, something like that, 250. So it's a, it's a big, it's a long way.
20 feet's a requirement.
The, the, the site plan lines with the Sonic to the north, if you can picture that. So the back of this is pretty much the back of the Sonic.
Okay.
So what you're not seeing on that plan is, is all the open space that remains behind the Sonic.
Okay. Any other questions for the applicant? Seeing none, do I hear a motion?
Move we approve.
Got a first, any second?
Second.
Got a first and a second? It's James. If you'll please call the roll.
John Conroy?
Yes.
David Hunt?
Yes.
Jim Lamb?
Yes.
Ken Demetrio?
Yes.
Jack Young?
No.
James Reed?
Yes.
Don Conway?
I'll need to recuse from this, this one too.
Paul Kaiser?
No.
All right. So that carries you?
That's it. And so I believe that passes?
Yes.
That's correct, so it does pass, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. And I believe that, I believe that concludes our business for the day.
Youth Villages.
One more, I'm sorry, we don't want to forget this, Youth Villages, please, you'll come forward, Kim, uh, Director Taylor, I'm sorry, and introduce that.
Ms. Jamie Bostic with A2H Inc., on behalf of Youth Villages, is requesting approval of a revised site plan for Youth Villages. This proposed site plan is for the addition of 82 parking spaces. The property is located at 7410 Memphis Arlington Road, on the northeast corner of Memphis Arlington and Broadway Road, and it is within the RE residential zoning district. The specific request tonight again is to add 82, uh, 82 space, parking spaces to accommodate employee parking. The parking spaces will be divided into two locations on the site, with the northern, uh, parking lot being located on the outer edge of the main drive, adjacent to existing parking spaces. The southern, uh, part of this, of the, uh, proposed parking lot will be located adjacent to the campus school. We are requesting that they add one additional accessible space. With that being said, we recommend approval with conditions as stated in the staff report, thank you.
Thank you, Director Taylor. Thank you. And is the applicant here? Thank you. You'll come forward, state your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, I'm Jamie Bostic with A2H, uh, 65 Germantown Court.
Thank you. And do you agree with the conditions of staff?
We do, yes.
Thank you. Any comments you'd like to make?
No.
Okay. Any questions from the commission for the applicant? Any questions for the commit, for the applicant? Seeing none, we thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
And do I hear a motion?
A move we approve.
Second.
We got a first and a second, if you'll call a roll, please.
John Conroy?
Yes.
David Hunt?
Yes.
Jim Lamb?
Yes.
Ken Demetrio?
Yes.
Jack Young?
Yes.
James Reed?
Yes.
Don Conway?
Yes.
Paul Kaiser?
Yes. Passes, thank you. Any other comments, Sam?
We have three, um, open discussion.
Thank you.
That were submitted.
So we have three comments, they want to, people, people want to speak, so we'll move through those. Do we, we date those by time, or how do we pick those?
Three minutes per person for a total of 20 minutes.
Okay, so.
Oh, not for a total of 20? Oh, it just goes, okay. So, yes, um, and if you ended up like not wanting to speak, I know at least one person said they weren't sure, you don't have to, but I'll start with, I think the first person that gave me one was Nicole Travis at 3141 Hill Lake Drive, and that is for the follow-up on Union Depot slash parting thoughts.
Hey, guys, do I need to restate everything?
You state your name and address for the record, yes, if you'll please do that.
Nicole Travis, 3141 Hill Lake Drive.
Thank you.
Uh, try to keep it short, I had notes, I was gonna be neither for nor against the Union Depot, I was just gonna actually ask you guys to carefully consider, um, I think you guys got that one right, I really do. Uh, I don't consider myself an obstructionist, and I understand the need for evolving and growing, I don't want to see Bartlett wither and die on the vine, um, but I'm also not a fan of growing for growth's sake. Um, no shade to the previous administration, but I think we feel maybe a little bit under the gun sometimes to kind of play catch-up, um, and to the point of, uh, property taxes, whatever, um, the initial meeting that we had, and this is not anything against Mr. Grant, but, uh, I was in that November 2021 meeting where I kind of got sold the, hey, this is gonna help with the, uh, kind of level out the property taxes and not have a need for them long-term, and when we see where we're, what we're facing here. With growth comes the added expenses, so I get that. Um, I was a little bit taken off guard with the 500, I guess domiciles is what we'll call them, between the 225 units and then the 275, um, flats, um, that area, I know what, I know what the traffic studies can potentially say, but if you ask the common person traveling those roads day in and day out, just because it can go there doesn't mean it should go there. Um, so again, I do thank you guys for your diligence and for, um, you know, weighing the opinions, some of them emotional, some of them, and rightfully so, uh, and just for your time and your service, I appreciate you.
Thank you.
All right, the next one, I'm so sorry, I can't remember who gave me the one next, but we'll go by subject, so Cindy Cromwell, um, with Little Bears?
So where do we go from here? Because I know there's gonna be development, I know y'all want him there, I know, I, I understand that.
Well, the, 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 the planning commission tonight voted not to forward this to the Mayor, Mayor, Board, and Alderman with a favorable approval.
So, what happened this evening, sorry, there we go, uh, is a non-favorable recommendation was forwarded to the Board of Mayor and Alderman, and that'll go before the Board of Mayor and Alderman for another public hearing at July 8th meeting. Uh, and from there, uh, should the Board of Mayor and Alderman approve that special use permit request, then the applicant will need to come back with master plan slash outline plan approvals, and then a construction and a final plan for each phase of the development.
Right. Well, that's all I needed to know, like I said, and I even put, we even put that in the petition, we know there's gonna be development, we understand that, like I said, I can remember when Youth Villages wasn't- Like I said, I can remember when Youth Villages wasn't there, it was Miss Steele's property, okay? I go way back. But I just want to make sure that the children are protected, and I appreciate y'all's vote tonight because that's my main concern. And I've even told Mr. Grant, I said, I understand if you want to put townhomes back there. I can, on that side of my property, we have six acres, I can a little bit more control five people's houses back there and maybe, you know, keep a registry of who's living there and who's not, but I can't a five-story building. And I know he says, oh, it's not going to be five stories. Well, you can say that all day long, but if it's on the paper and you decide to do it, you're going to make money, of course you're going to. But, you know, I just don't want to see, and I don't think any of y'all want to see someone overlooking whatever you're doing. And I have even mentioned Mr. Grant, you know, my employees, even myself, driving down the street, going to the bank, and some of his workers, which he can't control all those, urinating off the balconies over there. And that was what my concern was, I said, I don't want to see a five-story building with balconies overlooking a child's playground. You know, especially like I said, because I've been paying taxes in this town for thirty-eight years on a playground, you know? So, like I said, I'm just trying to protect the children, you know? So, but I appreciate y'all's time, and I appreciate the vote tonight. I know something will still go there, I'm very aware of that, because I know they've talked about a high V grocery, they've talked about Publix or some grocery store even going in there, but I know there, you know, would also have to be barriers between the school and that as well. So, I appreciate y'all's time. And I tried to keep all these parents under control, y'all, I really did. A lot of people have gone through Little Bear stores. Thank y'all.
Thank you for comments, and Sam, thank you for clarification on that.
And our final one is Melanie Bush regarding the EGY subdivision slash shine and roll car wash.
I've seen some of y'all before. My name's Melanie Bush, I live at thirty-nine oh-four Wheeler's Run Cove. I know it's too late, and the car wash has already been approved, but I just feel like I need to make a statement because, like others here have said, my family has been in Bartlett since eighteen sixty-seven. I am a Bond descendant, I actually live on land that was owned by my Bond family, so this is all very emotional for me. But I also am on the Weathers Grove HOA, I'm the secretary, and we already put up with a lot of noise and light pollution from the Sonic. Now, we're going to have to listen to noise from the car wash. My neighbors Brian and Heather Burgess, who were not able to be here tonight, they live at thirty-nine oh-one Wheeler's Run Cove, and they will be the most affected by the car wash because it will basically, for all intents and purposes, be in their backyard. They recently paid five-hundred thousand dollars for their house. Now, they're going to have a car wash sitting in their backyard, and I just think that's just really awful. And they're, you know, we're concerned about, you know, they have small children, a lot of us in the neighborhood have dogs, there's small children in our neighborhood, some of even, some of them are even special needs, and we're just very concerned about those children getting on that property, our dogs getting on that property, you know, being able to wander, you know, maybe out into Highway Seventy. I know that the car wash owner has asked for a fence to go up, and we, that is one of the things that I would like to say is that we hope that y'all will, whoever approves that, will approve that a very large fence go up along that residential property, because as it stands right now, anybody can walk into our neighborhood right off of Highway Seventy. And it's very dangerous. As a matter of fact, our neighbor's dog has wandered over onto the property several times, but, and the, I know the owner was here tonight, we had a meeting with him, and, you know, we, he definitely heard that we were not happy that he was going to build a car wash there, and, you know, I just, you know, he tried to tell us it's going to increase our property values, which is, that's ridiculous, because I personally would not buy a house that I was looking into, under a car wash, you know, every day. I can't imagine the traffic that it's going to cause, I mean, it's right next to the Sonic, it's across from the Kroger, it's across from the Kroger gas station, not to mention the auto body shop, Stewart Brothers Hardware. We regularly hear car crashes on the Highway Seventys, as a matter of fact, we heard one yesterday afternoon, it sounded like a bomb went off. So, again, our main concern right now, and that's kind of why I'm here as part of the HOA, our main concern right now is getting him to build a fence along that residential property, you know, to kind of keep people from being able to walk onto the, onto the property. And anyway, I know it's too little, too late, I just can't imagine how many car washes Bartlett needs. I mean, there's going to be like four car washes within four miles of Ellendale, and I just, it blows my mind. But anyway, thank y'all all for being here, and I appreciate y'all, and I know Sam has helped me out a lot, I have emailed him a lot and asked him questions, and I appreciate you for listening to me, and thank y'all again for being here.
I appreciate your comments, thank you. Any other business tonight? Any comments or discussion from the commission? Seeing none, we adjourn.